This one's been broke before.
Oh, has it?
Shall I let them know?
We just did.
Got that. All right, I've called to order our work session and we're gonna start with a quick discussion about an opportunity to be a, I always forget the term, assigner on a, trying to get the Supreme Court to hear a case.
Oh.
So, we'll let the lawyer explain, I always forget that.
Amicus friend in the court?
So, we had a few emails that went around last week in response to Multnomah County filing a petition for review in the lawsuit brought by, or on behalf of, on behalf of some women, or some children, excuse me, against the state that was overturned at the Court of Appeals and is now being appealed to the Supreme Court. Multnomah County filed an application to file an amicus brief in that same case. They filed soon after the petition for review was filed by the appellant's, but, which what that means is it precludes us from signing off on their brief because they've asked for permission for themselves to write the brief, whereas they would need to amend that petition to add anybody else that was actually going to sign on.
So, the, just to step back a step, the appellants are going directly to the Supreme Court, they're not asking for en banc review in the circuit court?
No, they've already, the case has already been reviewed by the Court of Appeals, which rendered an opinion, and the appellants are now seeking review, it's discretionary review at the Supreme Court.
Okay, I mean typically, you get a decision from a three judge panel at the Court of Appeals and you go, if you don't like it, you go back to the, and ask for the en banc, the whole Court of Appeals to review it.
So, this is-
And you can go directly to Supreme Court, but more typically, parties go back for en banc review before they go to the Supreme Court, so they're not doing that step.
No, this is a petition at the Supreme Court.
Okay.
There is another opportunity that came our way in that there is a group, it's Our Children-
Our Children's Trust?
Our Children's Trust is organizing a group that actually participated at the Court of Appeals level, they are filing their petition on Friday, which is one that we can become a signatory to if you should decide. And the group of amici, amiki-
Amiki.
Amiki that they are seeking review on behalf of include the mayor of Eugene, Representative Peter Buckley, a variety of city councilors, the Oregon Environmental Council, Climate Solutions, Hair on Fire, Douglas County Global Warming Coalition, it's just a laundry list of a whole bunch of entities. The brief has been largely authored by the Crag Law Center, who you may or may not be familiar with. I have been given, this is their 2016 brief that was submitted in the Court of Appeals, and just yesterday, the brief for the Supreme Court was forwarded to me and I haven't had a chance to read it. And what I am going to have Scott do after this meeting is forward it all to the five of you to give a read through. I saw nothing in the 2016 brief that gave me any pause if the city were to decide to sign off. It is largely, while the group is very diverse, there are some faith-based organizations, there are some environmental organizations, there's individuals, the brief in, the text of the brief is all about climate change, and nothing gave me pause. Of course, I was not able to check all the citations or anything like that, I just gave it a cursory review, and I will review the newer version tonight or tomorrow, and like I said, I'll have Scott forward that to you, and if it's something that you would like to give direction on, I don't have any, nothing gave me any heartburn to sign off on this brief if we were to want to put our hat in the ring.
And basically, this petition is just asking the Supreme Court to hear it, correct?
That was what my understanding was, however, their brief to support that is pretty lengthy, but I don't think the issues that the lower court decided on were on the public trust doctrine, and this really doesn't have a lot of public trust doctrine information in it. It's mostly just about the, it has some, but it's mostly just about the impacts of climate change on the state of Oregon, our economy and a variety of other things.
So, the ballgame at the Supreme Court, you make your best argument to get them to hear it, because, you know, they don't hear, they hear like 5% of, you know, less than that, you know, something like .5% of cases sent to them. So, yeah, you gotta make your full brief, you gotta, yeah, and if it gets granted, if the Supreme Court agrees to hear it, typically just the parties will get to argue, on occasion they do allow an amicus to argue if one of the parties wants to share their time with the amicus, but typically, the amicus isn't arguing at the Supreme Court.
Which is good, because we don't have the staff time to do a-
Oh, yeah, no, no, we wouldn't be, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate, I mean, perhaps, yeah, I would not anticipate a large amount of time being devoted to the amicus folks arguing, one way or the other, you know, I didn't get a chance to look to see who else is filed for status other than-
Wasn't the case just decided like a week or two ago?
Yeah, Court of Appeals, Oregon Court of Appeals, yeah.
It's interesting that they're all-
No, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was January 8th, I think, situation came down, so you got a 60-day window.
Ninety, ninety, you got 90 for filing in the Supreme Court, you got 60 in the, yeah, you got 90 in the Supreme Court, but they're coming up on that if it was January 9th, it's April 9th or whatever, yeah.
Right, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I would like to, I would like to, I mean, at the very least, I will sign it as the mayor, just like Lucy Viness did. I think it would be a little bit more powerful if it said the Milwaukee City Council or the City of Milwaukee, however that best resonates.
And where we, one of the beginning paragraphs lists all of the different signatories in a paragraph describing who you are, and so we can put together over the next course, next couple of days, a couple of sentences about, you know, we're obviously a municipal corporation of the state of Oregon and yada, 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 but that, you know, we've adopted our climate action plan and a few other key things that can identify who we are, and then it would be signing on to largely the brief signed by Crag.
So, we'll get a copy of that by email?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
For tomorrow?
No, tonight, we can forward it to you tonight.
You have a copy of it?
Yes, Scott, or no, Scott?
I'll make sure, I'll make sure, we'll get it.
Who's familiar with Crag, who's not? You are, you are, you are. They're an interesting firm, they, it was formed originally by two, at the time, younger attorneys who were five-figure kind of attorneys at big agencies and disgusted with the work they were having to do, and they went out on their own, they mortgaged their houses and started this firm, and they take all of their cases, their environmental cases, and generally speaking, from people who can't afford to pay them. So, they raise, they do a fundraiser every year, which is how I originally got to know them, because the original fundraiser they used to do was professional outdoor photographers would do big prints, and then they would auction the prints.
Yeah, I think they're a nonprofit, I mean, you called them a firm, but I think they're a nonprofit.
They are technically a nonprofit, but it, I mean, it's-
Functionally, the work is a-
Six lawyers and, you know, a couple of legal assistants, and, I mean, it's a law firm.
They're a respectable organization for sure, and I will note, and I would assume it to be the case, although I haven't opened the new brief, this Court of Appeals brief was co-authored by Hutchinson Cox, which is a law firm down in Eugene, so they, and then there's also, I thought there was another person involved, although I didn't print that page on this one, that co-authored the brief.
And Courtney, was she the-
I can't tell from this one, this is, Chris Winter signed this one.
Okay.
Oh, it's Elizabeth Ann Holmes of the Blue River Law PC, it's a probably a small law office in Eugene, and so it's, they were, yeah, it's unclear to me who represents who, but it's quite clear to me that Crag took the laboring oar in authoring the brief, Crag did.
So, what do you need from us when?
Well, I can send that to you guys, I think Scott just indicated, send it, give it a read as much as you want, and I'm just looking for direction, if we all want to submit something on behalf of the city, all it takes is putting together a paragraph, and the brief's due Friday, so having authored many of these in the past, I would like to let them know by Thursday, so that they don't have to worry about gathering anybody, anything on the last day, that would be my ask, and if, at this point, you would like to give me direction, that that's what you'd like to do, unless I hear otherwise from you, we can approach it that way.
I think that's probably the way we should do it.
Yeah, so unless somebody has strong objections-
By noon Thursday.
Three people have strong objections.
Right, Scott just emailed it to you, so that'll be some nice reading out on the deck this evening in the sun.
Okay.
You're so optimistic that we'll get out of here while there's still sun.
Maybe tomorrow.
Was that a note of wistfulness I heard in your voice?
I haven't slept much the last couple of days.
You may get to go home to the sun, but not us.
All right, I think, so that's all you needed?
I believe so.
Okay, are we-
If anybody has any questions, feel free to shoot me an email.
Is Kelly coming?
So, Kelly is having car troubles, but Leila is able to come up and give a brief update on the downtown business lines.
Awesome.
Good evening, so, yeah, Kelly wasn't able to attend last minute and just asked me to give you an overview of kind of upcoming activities in downtown. So, there is in April, there's several events happening, she wanted me to note, so the downtown cleanup is Saturday, April 13th, and so a lot of the businesses are getting together to do a big cleanup effort in the downtown. The bunny hop, which is, I don't know if any of you have attended that, but the businesses host sort of like a trick-or-treat style event where they have giveaways for kids and you kind of bring your kids down and go door-to-door to businesses, so that is Saturday, April 20th. May is the start of both First Friday and farmer's market season, so just to note, the first season opener for First Friday is May 3rd, and then that Sunday is our first farmer's market on May 5th, and just for the benefit of the public to know that the farmer's market's gonna remain in its spot that they have traditionally been in for this season, so they'll be there for the full season. So, those, the main events through the summer primarily oriented around the First Friday and the farmer's market, just to note, the Carefree Sunday is in August as well, and typical sort of October events, the Halloween Trick or Treat is scheduled for October 26th, the DMBA will be hosting a pumpkin carving contest again this year, and that's October 27th. The Sunday's Farmer's Market Season End is Sunday, October 27th as well, so that'll be the same day, those two events. The farmer's market for Thanksgiving is scheduled for November 24th, and then Small Business Saturday, so that's the kind of opposite of Black Friday, where you come out and support small businesses, our business will be participating, that is Sunday, Saturday, excuse me, November 30th, and then the Umbrella Parade, as we all know, is December 7th. So, that's the rundown, lots of events happening, and just as a heads up, I'm still continuing to work with the DMBA, attending most of their monthly meetings, in fact, Anne attended the last one in my absence, so still partnering closely with them as construction continues in South Downtown. That's all I got.
Cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just moving right along. Kelly, would you like to come talk about the Metro Regional Bonds?
Would love to.
Excellent.
It's really more than Metro Regional Bonds, right?
I did, I-
Your staff report was-
I named it the wrong thing.
Pardon?
I probably named it the wrong thing.
Okay, I was just wondering, yeah.
Okay. I did that thing you don't, oh, here it is, ha-ha. I have a really short slide joke, just to, as always, to keep me from forgetting the different topics to cover. Okay, so I am mainly gonna focus on these three, which are Metro-led funding efforts, but in the staff report, I did touch on ODOT STIP funds too, so I'll throw that in when we get to the projects at the end, and if you have questions throughout the way, on anything else that I mentioned in the memo that's not covered, but there is another source of funds that's not Metro that I did mention in there. And I think I actually did put in, I put in some verbiage on the county VRF as well as another mechanism that comes into play here in terms of matching funds, and there was, there's a strategic component of the VRF, so I put both the ODOT and that in the staff report. They're not slides here for that, because they're smaller, but we'll still talk about them. My primary objective of today is just to get from you where I should be headed in terms of working with staff in other jurisdictions, and there's some great opportunities out there, but we kind of need to know which things we want to go for in those different opportunities. By no means am I promising you today that I'll be able to get any of this, this is money in other people's pockets, but there are some good options. So, I'll spend most of my time talking about the Metro Parks Bond, the Metro Regional Flexible Funds, because those are gonna be coming up soon, and the Transportation 2020 Bond Measure. So, first, let's talk about the Metro Parks Measure, so this is sort of a redo of something that Metro's done two different times. The primary buckets of funding, they're looking at a $400 to a $450 measure, the buckets of funding that they're looking at right now, the biggest one being land acquisition, so as you know, in the past, they've used these funds to go out and acquire substantial natural areas, they still would like to keep doing that. They also have their own Capital Parks projects that they need to do for their, that's all that second box is all spent on Metro Parks. There's local share, we, as you'll see in the memo, did, were recipient of some funds directly from Metro last time, it was just about $600,000, NCPRD received funding directly as well, that's really helpful, helps us get to the needs that we have. They, in the conversation that we had, Anne and I, with the different city managers last week, I think, I think it was last week, there is some pressure or concern from the Metro Council themselves about accountability around those funds and not just wanting to hand them out, and so there's some interest, they've talked about doing different things, like shrinking the local share, or having that local share have more strings attached to it, one of the primary goals that council has set is serving a broad cross-section of different people, so diversity and inclusion is a huge goal for this effort, and so, yeah, you get this base amount, but you're gonna have to approve to us how you're serving low-income or diverse populations if you want to access this other portion of the fund. So, they're kind of grappling with that as a council, and so we were asked, and I think we should comply, to share with the Metro Council what we would, what we would do, how local funds would be used in our community, just as a way to showcase kind of where those funds would go, and Martha Bennett seemed to feel like that would be helpful in that conversation.
Were there projects that were poorly completed or not completed, or something that caused them to have concern about the process, the way it's been working up till now?
I don't have any specific examples, but it did seem like there was some chatter in the group about projects that were mentioned as ones that would be done but that weren't done, or funding going to kind of basic maintenance but not going to add anything new, like nothing that you would, Metro would say, like, I have this new place that I didn't have before, kind of helping address deferred maintenance and that kind of thing.
Well, so, I mean, if they have that concern, they should, you know, make localities show how they spent it last time, and if they do that, I think we're in great stead, because we bought two parks and we finished, we did two pocket parks, this is my recollection. We bought Balfour and we bought Bowman and Bray, and we did Homewood Park and Spring Park, pocket parks, so, I mean, we did what it was for.
So, I think if we could do, I think that would be a great way to respond, and say, this is what we did last time, and this is what it yielded for our community, and here's all the benefits, and I think if we did that, that would help, I can't say that would assuage everyone's concerns, but it would be-
I thought I heard that there was a push to go the other way, to raise the local-
There is a big push, so that push is being led by Portland Parks, and Portland Parks, if you look, believe it, what they got last time, it was upwards of 19 million, they're a pretty big beneficiary of this share, so they are pushing that for less strings, less red tape, don't have a supply for as many grants, just, we know what we need to do and let local jurisdictions have the funds they need to get it done. So, they had led a letter that they'd been asking folks to sign on, we didn't sign on because I hadn't had this conversation with you all yet, and I kind of wanted you to see these different buckets and think about what we want before I went too heavy into local share, because if I go more, if I go big on local share, it might draw down something else, and so, is what we want in another bucket. So, we didn't sign on, but we still would be welcomed with open arms into the coalition led by Portland to help advance local share, and I know NCPRD, who's here tonight, signed on to a letter about that as well. So, that's the local share, then there's Urban Transformations, they're gonna come up with a new name, I think, but Urban Transformations is the place that I think maybe a Milwaukee Bay park could go. It is definitely a place that I think the Metro Council and staff are looking at for Awolamet Falls or the Sandy River Project out in Troutdale, where there's some major barriers to restoring a beautiful place, but it's, so I'm looking at, the way they're talking about it, I don't think you're gonna see a lot of projects come out of this fund, maybe a couple of big ones, but the way that we pitched it to them in the conversation was Milwaukee's really a success story-
way that we pitched it to them in the conversation was Milwaukee's really a success story. Milwaukee Bay Park is a success story for urban transformation, the way they're talking about it, and how you can go in and restore a beautiful place, reclaim it, but we're at kind of the, we have one phase left to go, and can you, can this fund help us cross the finish line? So this is sort of, I guess, where I heard the most potential as a place potentially for that project, which we'll talk more about later.
Because what would our local share be otherwise?
Well, last time it was 600,000. So local share's not gonna, local share for us could be a...
Last measure only raised 207...
Yeah. So it could go up.
Oh, that's right.
And if it went up, and I haven't done the math on it, if you doubled it, which I guess you could...
So let's say it's 1, 2.
Yeah. So you're still, and I mean, I think it's great, and I think, and NCPRD's done some great work in kind of looking at if their local share goes up and our local share goes up, how does that fit into the overall financing plan for the park? So there's a there there, but I also kind of don't want to give up on, is there a bigger chunk that you could get out of this pot that finishes this story that I think is really compelling? And I also just like the, I don't just like it, I believe the narrative that there's a lot of investment that's come in here and that will come in through the housing bond, that could potentially come in through transportation investment, that has come in through transportation investment, and the parks, this investment really complements all that, kind of brings it all together. So for me, I kind of like that box. I like the local share too, because we've got other needs, but go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. So Sandy River would be, is that a section that's in Multnomah?
Multnomah County, yes, but it's a trial, city of Troutdale.
Okay. I'm just thinking about...
Geographic, yes.
Geographic, how they're all situated, and if there's anything that would be potentially landing in the Urban Transformations bucket for Washington County.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, they're good at finding things, and they have, Twalh Hills Parks, right, they have a really robust Parks District that I'm sure is working towards some different items. I don't know what their Willamette Falls or Milwaukee Bay Park is, but I'm sure they do.
I'm just trying to assess if there's any strategic risk involved in Urban Transformations as a place to kind of focus.
Oh, yes. Yeah, there's risk. I mean, I think, well, I think that's why you wouldn't go all, you wouldn't say only urban transformation, no local share. I think, I think the argument that we should make is local share and urban transformation, and actually, we'd love the, you know, I don't think I put it up on there. So there's another category, Nature in Our Neighborhoods Grants, which they funded last time and should be a box up here. And so I like that too, because in the community, that needs to be community member-led or nonprofit-led, but there are options that we could be pursuing, we now have a Parks Foundation that could be going after Nature in Our Neighborhoods funding as well. So I think all these boxes are kind of great. I would just, if they're gonna do an urban transformation pot, which it sounds like they are, I think we could make a good pitch, that we are, where something you can showcase is what it looks like at the end, because both those two projects I mentioned are still a little ways out, so.
So would Railroad qualify for the trail acquisition development?
So that's where, right now, they're having, there's a, there's a grand discussion happening around trails, because trails are going to come up in all three of these categories that I'm mentioning. So the way they're, they haven't gavelled down, but the way they're talking about trails in this pot is if the destination, or the origin, the origin destination is a park or a natural area, then it would be a good fit for the Parks Funds. If it's really a transportation, you know, economic centers, job, you know, commuters, schools, that should be in the transportation measure. So the way I look at Railroad, it's more on the transportation side, but...
Not if it, not if it starts at our historic museum and ends at Three Creeks.
Yeah. Is there a lot of commuters, people going back and forth to our museum and Three Creek?
Well, it's college.
No, sorry.
People, what?
It would be!
Yes, I must have missed what you said.
Yeah, no, I, no, I was just like, is that a trip? I mean, I guess I'm trying, I think Three Creeks, Three Creeks could be compelling, but, because you just have to have a destination, so I hadn't really thought about that piece of it.
A lot of people go hike there.
I was looking more, I think the undercrossing, under 99, that would, could be a pretty clear connection to a natural area, or a park. But yeah, maybe I need to look at the alignment better and kind of see where it connects to, and if there's a viable option for it here. I'm not opposed to it.
And then you could just keep on going all the way up to Mount Talbot.
Yeah.
Is Railroad, I mean, is the county working on Railroad or Harmony?
This has been a while ago that I saw their TSP, but there was a off-road trail that was designed to sort of connect up to Railroad. It meant crossing in the, everybody's favorite intersection...
Right.
Diagonally, but it puts you actually into, it went through Three Creeks.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm kind of remembering it using that road, but I don't, actually, I'm not sure that that's right, because that drops a lot of elevation, so, but anyway, it was there at one point.
Maybe we can talk more about how, how I can, I probably need to understand the project a little better, the ultimate alignment, where it connects. So I guess for me on Metro Parks, I'd like to continue, as long as you all are comfortable with it, working with our friends at NCPRD and with you all to advance the idea of Milwaukee Bay Park potentially being a good urban transformation project. I think it actually would be good for us to jump in and help out on the local share piece, so giving some good information about how local share was used well in our community. Local share for us is a good thing. We should, it would be good to have it. So those two parts for me are two items that I would like to be able to have your support in doing that. Does that sound okay?
And I would, I would encourage the Nature Neighborhoods program too, because that really has been a fantastic program that's done a lot of good with, just getting people engaged and not spending a lot of money necessarily to do it. I did wonder if that was one of the programs that had elicited some concern about accountability on Metro Council.
They didn't say that, and again, this was just between Martha Bennett and city managers, so I wasn't talking directly with council members. But Nature in Our Neighborhoods is 25 to 30, and that's, they actually showcased that as something that was really positive, that was underfunded in the last measure, and that they wanted to formalize and continue and grow. So they were...
They're on board.
Yeah, it sounded like that, they really liked it.
For our work in Oak, in Elk Rock.
Yeah, I don't, I think I'd need to go chat with Barb and be like, hey, what do you guys think would be a good fit for Nature Neighborhoods? And I think the Friends Groups that we have, yeah, you know, could they get on? I mean...
I was going to say, the Kronberg stuff would be a good...
It's at a really good place to really benefit from some Nature Neighborhoods programs. And they've actually got, there's a segment of the Nature Neighborhoods program that focuses on equity and inclusion measures. That's a really interesting project, and I could see that working in other parks that aren't necessarily as nature-y. That would provide really nice opportunities to engage lower-income neighborhoods with nature.
I will say, it just will be important for us to keep top of mind, you know, they have, which I'll, I can make copies of these and send them out, but they have their primary outcomes that matter to them for this measure. And so they're wanting to serve communities through inclusive engagement, transparency, and accountability, so again, us showing that we're communicating and connecting with people will be really important. Advance racial equity through bond investments is their second outcome. So just, it's really important as we continue to do all the work that we do, to look at how our projects and how our plans are serving all different kinds of folks, and this will be increasingly something that we need to demonstrate progress towards in this funding measure in particular. So I won't read the rest of them, but if you hear the equity discussion, it really is being put first in all the conversations they're having about the Parks Measure. So with that, I think I'm going to move over to Regional Flexible Funds. This one's actually pretty straightforward. You all have, you're familiar with this, I think.
Is this what, the same thing as M-Tip?
This is M-Tip.
Okay.
Yeah. So the Regional Flexible Funds are a component of the M-Tip, and it's the component that has a grant program. So they are just like the states doing their 2124 STIP, they're doing their 2124 M-Tip. There's only new money for 22 through 24, which is why I said you can only add projects in those years. The Act of Transportation Projects Fund will be 36.8 million. I don't know if they've actually, I don't know if JPAC's actually decided that, but that's what's in the materials right now. They expect that to be the split. The fund, the applications are going to come up pretty fast on that one. The award size, I've actually always talked about it being $5 to $7 million, and I just went back and checked the awards from the last round, and they were smaller, so I revised it down. So this is a smaller pot. It is federal money, so we have to be strategic in what we're willing to spend federal money on, because it federalizes everything else. So when we're talking about projects at the back, that's where we got to think about which ones we really want to do that to.
So is this the pool that a year and a half ago, or whatever, we sort of stepped back and let Wes Lynn go forward and take the...
Cycle track.
Cycle track, yeah.
Yep. So we should be pretty set up to get this from Monroe. The question is, you know, if we got $2 million from Monroe, it's actually probably not worth taking, because it would literally cost, make the project cost so much more that the $2 million would be irrelevant. But if we could get $8 million towards Monroe, then it's a totally different story. Or maybe break it up and do just the 224 section of Monroe with the federal money and go, okay, that's the end of our project.
Right.
Okay, now we're on a different project.
That could be dicey. It depends on how far it goes, but...
Probably phase, I mean, you can just have a phased project, right? You only put in for one phase.
It just, it depends on how much...
It matters, it matters a lot in how you acquire right-of-way, which I'm convinced we're going to need on the Monroe project. So how you, how you go about your right-of-way acquisition matters quite a bit. So if you have the state acquiring right-of-way in a particular way, which I actually don't think they need to for the intersection improvements, they may not need right-of-way for that. I'm, I'm just speculating, but I don't know that it's required, so...
Everything's shrinking, nothing's growing.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll tell you a little bit more about how the state plays in that, but just for now, just think about the fund. Is this one smaller? You're familiar with it. 17th was a Regional Flexible Fund project, so the city's, the city's done this before. T2020, this is the new fancy name that is what Metro's calling the bond measure they're considering for 2020 to fund Southwest Corridor and a whole host of other improvements. I think it could still be as big as $20 billion, are they still talking about that number? So the mayor's on the task force for that. You guys have met two times, I think the third meeting's just around the corner. This is a big, this is a big, it's probably the biggest transportation thing that's going to move in our region for some time. It is corridor-based, so right now, all the conversations have just been about what corridors should be on the map and which ones should be off the map. And so that's your next meeting, I believe, is to add any new corridors. They've got 60 right now. They started with...
Six zero?
60.
Six zero.
Yep.
And it has to get cut down to 20, and they're asking all the counties, are there other ones that we didn't get?
That we missed, yeah.
Lackamas County, I think, is coming back with six.
Yeah, so we, you'll see my little box. I've been talking about 9090 and 224, because they are looking at bigger corridors, not really local roads, but they are interested in arterials. Metro Council has said they don't really want to buy interstate projects. They could buy components of interstate freeway projects, but they're not really, that's not where they want to spend their resources. They are really interested in arterials. They're particularly interested in arterials that you might want to transfer. Those, the ones that are high on that list right now are like TV Highway, Powell, 82nd, probably 82nd.
Transfer from ODOT to local jurisdiction?
Yeah. But we have some, we have state facilities that are not freeways that are right in our town, and they're 9090 and 224. And so we went back and forth. 9090 is actually one of the 60 corridors now, after some back and forth on map logistics, but is on the map, so we don't have to worry about that one for now. 224, we, we're going to have that conversation in the morning at the Metro Subcommittee. Making a push for that now, my argument has been that Railroad is in that corridor, that the Railroad multi-use path is within the corridor of 224. That's a little bit of a hard sell, but it's, I think it's, it is, so I'm going to be honest about that. But I also don't know that there's a ton of different projects that are going to pop up on 224, and it is an important corridor, and so if you have a multimodal solution to a transportation challenge and you want to build something, why not build a multi-use path along Railroad? So, and, but it also is part of, I'm not seeing a lot of other funding options for that particular project. If there's an amazing natural areas connection I'm unaware of, maybe it fits there, but I am trying to keep, I've been trying to keep it alive in this pot as well, because it's, it is expensive, it's outside, we only have design funds for it, we don't have construction funding for it. The way they're structuring it is they have Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects. Phase 1 should be really ready to go. Phase 2 can be, President Peterson's really interested, actually, in thinking about big, visionary-type projects that may just need some development. I mean, I think they'll put some sideboards on that, but they don't want to completely close the door to a big new good idea that isn't totally figured out yet, but those things will end up in Phase 2, not in Phase 1. The funding mechanism is not set. There seems to be some concern and opposition at council about making it a property tax-based. I'm not sure, but you may know more than...
Casual conversations have been that it's likely to be a mix of, mix of things, so we might do, likely to be a mix of things.
That's what I hit.
Where maybe there will be a bond and a this, and, you know, four or five different things that come together to...
Get to 20 billion?
Get to 20 billion. Cobbling together $20 billion, you know, you know how it is.
So, but there is another thing that's interesting too. So Trimest has agreed to fund all the project development work on enhanced transit corridors, and so I think that'll be another thing to really watch for, is are they, what enhanced transit options are they looking at on 99? And where can, you know, how can that help serve us as well? And not just us, but our other, our neighbors, you know, that are up and down 9090, so that's, do you want to say anything else about this one?
The only other, I've been asked by the county, they've, they're splitting up the six asks between three of us that are serving on it, and the other one they've asked me to ask on is the Oak Grove to Lake Oswego Bike Ped Transit Bridge. It was originally Bike Ped. Lynn Peterson is very interested in adding a lane, so it'd be a metered bridge for transit, but it would make a significant difference in the transit system if you, I don't know if any of you have ever had to take a bus from Milwaukee to Lake Oswego, but that route goes through downtown Portland. And takes about an hour and 45 minutes. So...
So is she...
Those three things would...
Would the sing, like, are we talking another Tilcom Bridge sort of design, or?
It wouldn't have light rail, it'd just be bus, it'd be a single lane for bus and then Bike Ped.
Okay, so, but it wouldn't be for car traffic? It would be dedicated bus?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Dedicated bus, bus only.
Great.
And it would, you know, the real significant difference that that project makes, I mean, everybody goes, well, the people who live in Oak Grove and work in Lake Oswego can use the bridge and not have to drive 10 miles. It's like, yes, and more importantly, it opens up an entire area for people on the east side to go to the west side, because right now, if you are going to the southwest section of the metro region, there's literally, you either go over the Arch Bridge or you climb the cemetery. Those are it. Otherwise, you're risking your life on 43. Literally. So it would, it would literally change the dynamic of Bike Ped movement, particularly bike across the region that way. I think it's significant, and I think it's one of those projects, you know, when you're trying to sell a bond measure and talk to people about, get them excited and inspired, this is, this is one of those sexy projects that people get excited about, so.
I'm going to go to this slide, which is hard to read, but it's the exact same chart that's in your staff report, so if it's easier for you to look at it in your staff report, it should match. The reason why I want to get into some projects is I, like I said, I kind of need to know what to do on a few things, and particularly on the Metro Bond Measure, even though they're talking quarters, they are starting to talk projects, and they have a consultant onboard where they're looking at, kind of setting up, I have an invitation to meet with them and kind of show them, here's the projects I'm talking about, so they can start modeling them, and I don't want to give them the wrong projects. So for Regional Flexible Funds, I am using just the CIP number, so that's why I put those, that's my, that's me showing you that I, this is the number I have. I think it's probably more than that. I've been kind of working on trying to build a finance plan for that project that's more like 10 to 12 million, not 7.8, but the CIP number is what I have. So I have it in Regional Flexible Funds as an option, because... So I have it in regional flexible funds as an option, because I don't know why it did this. Is that what you're, does that match what I gave you guys? Hold on.
Looks the same.
Does it match?
Yeah.
Okay, it is what I did, okay. So Monroe's at the top of the list, because right now, as you'll see over in the right-hand corner, I'm working with ODOT to see if there's a potential for them to fund the bike signal on the diverter on 224 through the STIP. And right now, I think they have that on the list for about two million dollars. I don't know if it will end up costing that. It's not funding that we would receive even if it were less than that. But it, that's a significant chunk of the cost of the Monroe project is that diverter. We also do have the, you know, the Linwood project, the Safe House to School project is gonna install the, the permanent installation of the diverter that just went in yesterday. So those funds are accounted for there. We do have, we're starting to, we're kinda starting to piece it together. And so that's where if we could get, I agree with the mayor that a two to, two million dollar regional flexible funds grant may not help us too much. But if it were more on the five to seven range, it could, it could be-
Unless we just broke out the 224 section and said-
Well, I wanna, I'm breaking it, I just, it's, it's, it's proceeding on its own course right now. Like, it can be a project that they deliver, whether we get anything else or not, it can be a standalone thing.
The intersection.
The intersection, yeah. So I would be applying, I mean, if, what I would like to do, and I would coordinate with state on this, is when I'm applying for regional flexible funds, I could use that for a match, though. I could show that you, the state, those funds are, you know, matching our funds to help round out this and make it look more competitive and show us in a better place. I will, I'm happy to kinda talk through the logistics on, if we're federal, we're federal, so it wouldn't really matter to me that point, if, including the ODOT piece or not.
Have they upped their ability to swap funds?
No.
They, they made a lot of happy noise about that at J-PAC a couple times and I, I don't, I have not seen any follow-up.
I think they're still swapping outside MPOs, not inside, but they could've changed.
So there's, there's an opportunity for, if, if a project is gonna be federal anyway, let's say the, the light rail line, it's Tigered. And there's some of this funding that's gonna go into that. They can, and there's state funding that can go into that. They can swap out money. So let's say we won eight million dollars for Monroe. They could give us eight million dollars of state funds, only they only do it ninety cents on the dollar, is that right?
Yeah.
Something like that. Eight million dollars of state funds minus ten percent. And we give them our federal fund into their already federal project.
And then we don't have all those federal hoops to jump through.
Correct, which makes our project actually doable.
Well, that's, yeah.
So that, that's, it was supposed to be, Trimest was doing it and then ODOT was supposed to do more of it than they haven't. They've done it in the past, but it's been really limited. It was like twenty million dollars worth or something and-
Yeah, it's mainly done outside. They've been increasing it outside MPOs, but inside MPOs, they, they MPO figure it out, you know, kind of thing. But the, but I, I would, I, I would not, anything we buy, to be safe, we should apply for anything for regional flexible funds estimated as if we're using federal. Like, and if for some reason you get to swap, great. But I don't wanna get two million dollars to build a five million dollar project. So I think we would assume, and they'll probably ask that we assume, that we'd be requesting federal. So I think this would need, this for me, because we've got design funds allocated to it, I have a path that we're pursuing on the 224 intersection, which is not a competitive process, but hopefully will pan out. And we are doing implementation at Linwood. To me, this is the top of the regional flexible funds list, because we need to build out the rest of that system. And we need to do, we've got the money to do the design to get the phasing a little more tight. But, so this, to me, is what I, what I guess I'm kinda hoping you'll see.
And it should be the top of C4's list.
Okay. So I'm not gonna talk about the others. And I did list out the two railroad projects as separate things, and I wasn't entirely sure if I was right about that, but-
Before you move on to those, though, so that's our piece, that's not the county's piece of Monroe.
I'm just looking at our piece.
Okay.
Yeah, the whole thing, I think, was sixteen change.
And I would be only, I mean, I wanna work and I'm happy to work with the county if they wanna jump in and do more on their side. I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I'm kinda planning right now that it's some, we would have a segment that we can do regardless. Okay, so then let's go to the regional transportation bond, that's the T2021. These are a little bigger. I had put Kellogg and Railroad on the list for this pot, which is why I was talking about 9090 and 224. And so I was limiting myself to those corridors that I thought were close enough to be able to go. I don't have the Lake Oswego bridge listed on here, but it could-
It's not in our TSP.
Yeah, it's not, cause it's not on my, our list, but-
Not our, not our circus, but-
I think there might be some placeholder thing, but yeah.
You do have to be in the art, they do want you to be in the RTP for this one, so that's what basically they're looking at, is the projects we have in the RTP, and these are the two big near-term ones for us that are unfunded right now. So regional parks, I already talked about that, but Milwaukee Bay Park, I think, is a good candidate for the Urban Transportation Fund. And then for Scott Park, we know we're gonna be working with NSPRD to masterplan that. That was a condition of the library, we need funds to actually build whatever that is. So that's where I think the local funds could be a real asset to us, so.
So a couple of questions. One, I definitely would look hard at putting railroad into that, because of the, whatever that was called, trails section. But if, if we do be able to do Milwaukee Bay Park, well, either way, do we wanna prioritize Scott or do we wanna prioritize one of the neighborhood?
Oh, I don't know, that's why I'm here. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanted Scott or Balfour, you know, or there are other-
Well, and so your Kronberg number, that's with the bridge.
I believe so, yeah.
That's with the bridge, because I, I was just saying today, I think the number that I've heard NCPRD say for the soft surface trails and the rest of it is like two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I almost took it off.
It's a small number.
But I just left it on as a place that I expect there's still some need to finish out and, but it's not, you're right.
It's much cheaper, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's under a quarter million, it's like a quarter million or less. So, I mean, if we got a million dollars local share, you know, we could do-
Probably do Kronberg and something else.
And Balfour and Scott, you know, and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have, we'd have master plans on Balfour, do we have a price?
I don't remember one, but I can't, I can-
Well, those prices they gave us when they were masterplanning were completely crap. They were complete crap.
And old.
And old. But I would think it's something ballpark of what Wichita it was. I would, half a million, four hundred to five hundred thousand, yeah.
So we could put this on the, I mean, maybe I should just put Scott Park and other local-
Maybe just neighborhood.
Neighborhood parks.
Neighborhood park, yeah, we've got, what, four unfunded?
There are four that were masterplanned five years ago.
Well, to me, that's-
One is complete, but we also have Scott Park that has drastically changed. Then you have Dogwood Park that is also a need of service.
Well, and we also have the north side of North Clackamas Park, which we always kind of seem to forget, but that is also masterplanned and calls for moving the dog park and a bunch of stuff, yeah.
I think all of that's consistent with the headnut I got earlier about urban transformation and local share. That if we go those two routes and potentially we can get to these things and do Milwaukee Bay Park, so. And then the STIP, I already talked about that. I think that's everything.
Cool.
You had asked me specifically about what to target for the strategic, the strategic fund in VRF. So we have the funds that'll come to us, but then there's a, some portion of funds that are getting set aside. I think I wrote that in the memo.
And those, those are supposed to be sort of-
Four hundred and thirteen. Yeah.
The strategic, wait, so there was two pots?
Yeah.
It's, one is to get county, portions of county road out of the county and into the city.
It's just one point one seven seven oh four per year.
Top of Lake would be a, a good spot. So having Lake from wherever we don't have it to Harmony. Seventeenth is two, is the state, that's not county, right?
Seventeenth Avenue?
Yeah, there's a piece, there's like a hundred yards.
As of the access to 224, cause of the ramp or whatever.
Tessie might know when she gets up here.
It's goofy, but yeah.
She's shaking her head no.
She knows, she's absolutely knows. Why, that I can, we can go to, is it, if it's for transferring things from the county to us, I can, we can come up with a list for that. I don't know how much of them I want us to have, but we can, we'll look at that and we can, we can talk that over separately. We got a little time.
But what, but then there was this other ten percent of it or whatever is for, like, things of regional significance or something. Partnership with the county and the city and-
I was kinda hoping some of it could go to match our regional flexible fund grant for Monroe, too.
Well, that would make sense.
To help round out that financing.
Half of it's theirs, half of it's ours, it's a significant.
So that one's gonna take, that Monroe is one, it's just gonna take, all these kinda take different sources all coming in together and matching up.
So I was thinking about if you end up needing to phase Monroe, for a lot of reasons, it makes sense to me to start at the east because of that, because it's where we meet the county, it's where we meet the Linwood project. And if we're looking at it through an equity lens, it's where we learned in the CPAC process, we have our most significant-
His Latino population.
So, yeah, I think we should start at the east and, and we've got Wichita Park right now, so that fits into it too.
Would we phase it like that in geographic chunks or would we phase it by going in and doing all the acquisition and then maybe the-
I don't know, we need a smart consultant to tell me. I need thirty percent plans on the whole thing, so I know what right-of-way is, is impacted or not impacted. So I do need that quarter, I need the whole thing. But in terms of how we phase from there, I'm totally open to the smartest idea from, you know, designers in the community input. And speaking of community input, we actually, I was invited to go talk to Hector Campbell about, like, hey, can you give an update on Monroe? And I need to write Dave Ashenbrenner back. I think what we're gonna, we're suggesting, we actually just have a PSAC meeting and so I can invite other neighborhoods that wanna hear about it too. And just make sure everybody knows that we did have, we have an adopted alignment, we have done this installation of the diverter. Here's what that's gonna look like with Linwood. Here's where we're headed in terms of this, you know, where we might be seeking other funds. And just do kind of a check-in with the community about it. Cause I do think there's just interest in kind of knowing where we are. And then that would be before we actually were working through the RFQ for the design contract for it now. So that, anything else we learn from that can help inform that. So we'll give people a sense of where we are.
Well, the other argument for starting on the east, if we phase it geographically, is east of Forty Second, there's no sidewalk, you know? There's nothing. So, I mean, there may be for a few blocks.
Yeah, if we do it geographically, it definitely start on the east, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great suggestion. And I'm not trying to be flip, I just don't know what's gonna make the most sense.
Right.
So, okay. I think I'll stop, unless you guys have any other questions.
Thank you, that was great.
Did we wanna do the next?
Oh, is Linwood done?
It is done.
Okay.
It's done, and you'll see a lot of comments about, wow, I wish it was better. And-
Lot of comments.
Yes.
Goodness, it's finally here.
Oh, I know, I know, you're right.
It's so much safer.
Thank you, I appreciate, I know, I should lead with the positive. A lot of people are really excited, but a lot of people that are even excited would like to have it, and it will get better. So the permanent installation does include a concrete median and a HOX signal. It will be more apparent, we can actually address some of those issues that are on the corners that we didn't address with this. So we will be doing that. And so, yeah, I'm so glad that it's in and that we had sunny weather. And Dalton Boden, who's on our engineering team, did an amazing job and really stepped up to see this through. And it, he has a picture, I'll send it to you, and it's Milwaukee's first bike box. So, and it's really cute and it's like, and it's right there at the, at the diverter. So we, we're all very happy to have it in, so thanks for your support.
Cool.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So next up, we have the Street Surface Maintenance Program. And this is going to be Kelly Staying and Tessie Prentice.
All righty, hello. I am here to present the annual report. So we had some streets paved this last fall. I think we did eleven streets, I guess, maybe I don't need that, no, I do. We paved eleven streets, it was an overlay to some existing roads that didn't have curbs. And so those had gone in, and then the streets crew did some crack sealing. They had four streets that they went through and had done that, and there was no slurry seals this last year, so.
Is that, that's kind of a pattern, you do slurry seals every second year and do more of them, is that right? Or is that not necessarily, okay?
That is not necessarily it, it was just how it worked. Difference of opinions about slurry seals. So, yep, it just didn't get done. So Bonnie had gone through some of the revenue, so we were a little higher on our street maintenance fee on what we had brought in and a little lower on the local gas tax and the electric utility privilege tax, but in the-
Both of those make sense, why did we go up? That's a not insignificant number that we went up on the street surface maintenance fee.
I have no idea why.
Was it just because we finally increased the?
It may have been the increase to the fee, or it-
Has there been that much growth that's kicking in?
We can get you an answer if we don't have it.
Oh, I can't imagine that growth has been that much.
Yeah, it may have been the change to the fee, cause that had gone through in twenty eighteen. As part of the, there were some discussions on that and, or it could've been a, probably a combination of both. Which is what brought it up. So I think we are doing okay on the program goals. I don't know if you had a chance to look through it. And then overall, the condition is okay. We are working to get a new assessment of the streets to have that, put it out for bid for a company to come through and redo a visual assessment, cause right now, all of our PCI ratings, the Pavement Condition Index, PCI, relates to just how the curves have gone on the computer. So we haven't had it evaluated for a couple of years since two thousand and eleven. So to get some sort of visual actually out there is what we're gonna work on this year.
And they do every street?
Yes.
They do, okay.
Yes. Now, they will go through and evaluate every street and then put it into our Street Saver Program. And that is what we use to determine how, what condition the streets are in for evaluating which ones need to get paved. So with that, cause based on the regression curve, it comes down that we are low. The computer says that overall, we have a number of fifty-two. I don't think it's true, but just cause it hasn't been looked at for eleven years.
Well, there's a fair number of neighborhood-
There are a few that are way below.
Twelve's, drags the average.
Well, actually, the basic, even from when I had done this, I didn't wanna redo the numbers. It loses about a point a month on them, so just time makes them diminish. So on some of my, going through the figures is just not even looking at it, it deteriorates quickly. So we have a list of upcoming projects. These are, the first group for twenty nineteen are ones that aren't, weren't done with, nope, I take that back. They are all the projects we are doing, including the South Downtown with the main street. So it's just all of the ones that were paving. So that would be Main. Then Thirty-Ninth and Wake wasn't part of the safe project construction, but it's being done because of, some of the future ones in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three. Most of these are gonna be tied to a different project, so it's paving in addition to. Whereas this year's is just paving on particularly Omark, because it hasn't been done and Lake is the same way, is, because they need to be done.
So that, so why break Lake up into two projects, two consecutive years? So there's, because twenty-first to thirty-fourth, and I have a question about that one anyway. But then thirty-fourth to thirty-seventh, the next year, it seems like, you know, the whole process of mobilizing twice on the same stretch of road.
Um, one, we aren't doing the intersection this year on thirty-fourth. We are not. We are not doing that intersection. And that's why-
Deadly.
Yes. But we are, that's going to be the future project, and whether the 34th to 37th is, it doesn't exactly make sense to me either, but they're two different projects, and so we are probably going to stop probably closer to, well, basically in front of the Floral to give enough room, because we have to do the ADA construction on that intersection, and the intersection might not actually be done until 2023 with Oakfield. We might stop the other one, the other side of 34th, just because it is such a large project.
Wow, that's a bummer.
Yeah, and it's a lot to do with the ADA requirements and exactly what we need to get done.
We definitely have had some accidents there. Had, had people have some accidents.
I know several people that had bike accidents, because the road is-
That's what I mean.
It is, it is very bad.
Because, because there are existing curbs, you'd have to do all of the ADA and all the ramps and everything, so if the money isn't there to do those, because we've separated that out now, right?
Right. Yeah.
So can we, I mean, that might be part of the answer to the question I did.
Can you do me a favor and just say that, so we've got the SSMP project, which is on Lake, on Lake, it's paving, it is, the SSMP is to start at basically where the high school is. Main Street comes through, part of it's, it's basically in a tie-in wherever the Main Street paving as part of the South Downtown ends. We're going to pick up from there and head up closer to Milwaukee Floral. We're going to stop short of the intersection because of the wires for the intersection, so we're not going to be, granted, it's a full redo of that section of road, so we'll stop short because we're not doing any signal work. Then, and that's going to be this summer, depending on how the timeline for the high school is. They were doing some curb work, and if they can get it completed in time. The other project is 39th, we'll be doing, it was supposed to be grind and overlay, all these projects were supposed to be grind and overlay, the condition is such that I don't think it will last, so I'm recommending that we do a full reconstruction of some sort and trying to figure out exactly what's best on these streets. So 39th and Wake is the other one where we will be redoing it. The sidewalks are almost complete, we're waiting for some stuff from PGE, so the contractor is, it'll be a different contract, but the SAFE project should be completed before the paving goes in. The pathway will have been paved already and will be tying into that. There's some issues along Wake Street with the new school buses, they've changed their route, and so there'll have to be some design edits just to account for the extra stress on the road from school buses. Then the other one is Omark, there is a business on Omark that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we need to completely redo that roadway. So I'm trying to figure out what kind of magic we can do to make that happen, because they can't stop production at all. So, and they need access constantly. So trying to coordinate-
Road, right? They need a road, too.
They do, they need a road, and they've bought stuff, and they're going to try to work with us. So I'm thinking of separating that project out completely, because trying to pave Lake, 39th, and Wake, in addition to coordinating Omark, is going to be a nightmare, so I'm thinking of just separating that, making it its own beast, because it's going to involve a lot of, a lot of work and juggling around, so it will be expensive. And what it should be, probably it cannot be, just because there isn't enough time to have them stay off of it long enough for the roadway to cure, because having the whole thing become concrete would be best, but they're just, they can't stay off it long enough. So we're going to have to, we're working on some designs of what it can be that will last a while.
I mean, if you did a lane at a time?
Even if we do a lane at a time, based on the configuration of the area, we can get almost all of it done. So, yeah, it'll be a matter of work. The other problem is that the truck drivers do not pay attention to the signs, they move them and run over it. So even, that's, all the patchwork that's been done, they, they move it to get it out of their way, so trying to get them not to move the barricades is also going to be fun.
Jersey barriers.
Yeah. And we may have to, of, to do something.
To protect our, I mean, that's a huge investment.
Yeah, no, it is going to be a very, very large investment, and-
Trying to work with them anyway, it just seems like.
Yep, no, it's, it is a large task. And so those are the projects that we'll be working on this coming up, 2019, if we can get out, we're a little, we're a little short-staffed in engineering and trying to get this stuff designed out and put to bit, yeah. And she's magic, but, um-
Not other things that actually need a real engineer to do, no, I'm not.
So, but, yeah, just trying to get all this construction done that we are doing and get stuff designed and out for bid within the construction window before we miss it, because that's part of the issue from last year, where we ended up, it got a little cold, and trying to get it all down before the change of season.
Does the lower part of Lake Road include continuing the bike lane? Or not?
I hope so.
Because right now, it's-
There's nothing.
There's no bike lane.
I know.
It ends where Trimate stopped working and then starts up again in front of the-
When you say lower part of Lake, you mean from where to where?
From, call it 21st to, well, that, that whole section, 21st through 34th. Yes, there is no bike lane anywhere in there.
See, that's why I was a little surprised to see it on this list. I mean, pleasantly surprised, because we get a lot, I mean, a lot of people are, you know, rightfully complaining about the condition. But Chuck had told us, I'm pretty sure that there had to be, I mean, he treated it as there needed to be widening, it wasn't just a repaving, and that there needed to be some kind of-
It was on his list of grind and inlay, and that means no widening. He wasn't going to take the curbs out. Basically, this, this coming up year's list, last year's list was overlay only, this one, this year's list was because of the curbs, it needed to have a grind in, an inlay. And so based on the fact that it was on this list, I'm inferring that no widening, because that was a whole different list. And that could be why they had separated out the 34th to 37th, because that wasn't on my list for this year. So that tells me it's, that one's a little more involved than, than a-
Because I thought originally Chuck had this for like 2021, so I was pleasantly surprised to see it was this year. I won't complain.
Yeah, no, he, this was on this year, the whole time.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this piece of Lake.
I think it was like, I need it, probably, and once I have it, I'll share it with other people. But you guys, but what is going and what year for Lake? What are the different elements, what are the different programs for all of Lake, so you can kind of see? Because I'm a little worried about people getting excited about different things that aren't going to be the thing they're excited about, because they see it happening on Lake, but that's one smaller component. And I know Hannah Ann had raised some concerns about making sure we're not cutting in to a street, you know, that we've just touched, which we don't, we're not going to do that either, but I think we might just need to pull together a little graphic that just shows, here's Lake, and here's, this is when SSMP is, and this is where-
Yeah, actually, we have it already, the graphic's already done, and it should be on the website.
Just that map?
Not this one, this one.
Which one?
That was the one in the report.
Oh, it doesn't show what-
It might not have-
Doesn't really show what-
It's not, okay.
That's too-
It's as big as I get it.
I know, it's great, it's wonderful, it's wonderful. And I'm going to, well, we're going to Lake specific one, and I'll-
Well, the other one is where we define the edge. We use 34th just because it was a nice edge, but we aren't going for 34th, we're cutting it short, but how do you say a random point in the middle of the block on that one? So that's where I think some of the confusion's going to come through, and, yeah, graphic would be better, one that we can zoom in on better. But, yeah, it's, it's an arbitrary point, but no, we're, 34th isn't going to be touched in my understanding, having reviewed some of the, what we were going through before is the intersection of Lake, 34th, and Oakfield. We'll be done with the Oakfield project in 2023.
But it's in Phase Two, so that one is where we have design funds, actually, that were approved as a part of this bond. So we're designing the Phase Two projects, even though we didn't fund the Phase Two projects. So that's where you may have seen from Chuck, 2020 or 2021, design year for the Oakfield intersection, because we will be, hopefully, designing it, because we have funding to do that, but won't have the funding to construct until the second phase of SAFE is approved. Were there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, with that, we are adjourned from the work session, and we will be back here at 6:00 for the regular session.